Open campus for any schools of youth. Now, who wants to speak? Raise your hand and Vanessa will record. Juan, you're the best. I'm hosting a cheer. How many? What do we say? Yep. Yes. Anyone want to talk about? Well, they said it's a good idea. I have one. Anybody else? I will go with you. Why do you think it's a good idea? Please speak right into the microphone.
I think it'll throw nearby businesses to schools and reduce the amount of school loans that we need every day.
Okay. And they've shown courage with his opinion right up there. Rational. Give a reason for his support. What do you think? You? Now you agree? You agree? Virginia?
Um. I believe perhaps that it wouldn't be the best idea for all grades to have open campus. Perhaps for the upperclassmen of juniors and seniors, just because they are a little more mature. They're in that last stages of their high school career. They probably have the maturity to go out into the city and not cause any disruptions to businesses, other pedestrians, people going about their day. Whereas freshmen and sophomores may be a little more inclined to rowdy.
Rowdy. Okay, so were you saying seniors and juniors or just seniors?
Seniors and juniors.
So then what would happen is perhaps you would say, "I like the idea of an open campus. I'd like to make an amendment that it would just be seniors and juniors." So we will accept that as a motion. All right? So now there's a motion made that the open campus idea will only be for seniors and juniors. So that's a motion. So in order for us to consider that, somebody has a second motion. So is there anybody here who would like a second motion? Motion is made. Now it's the second. So now what we focus on is the amendment. So now we get back to the main motion. We're talking now about juniors and seniors. So that's what the discussion is on. So what do you think of juniors and seniors at open campus? This is quiet.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. So is the school liable to make sure that these kids come back to school?
So it's a great question, right? So General Manager here, he's in the turn. So this is what would happen, right? So you ask everybody. The councilor says, "General Manager, please come up to the podium." He would reluctantly come up to the podium. And we would say to him, "The question is, if there is an open campus, does the city assume any liability if something happens to that student?"
Absolutely. It could expose the city to potential liability if a student was hurt. We had that lawsuit on prior occasions with the student hurt open campus. Those certainly valid fact to consider.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for General Manager? That was a great question because when you're implementing a law, one of the things you should look at is, is there any risk to the city? So that's a good question. So now we have a problem with perhaps a good idea, but now the city has a risk to it, right? Any other conversation on this?
Could we do a trial for like a certain period of time to see and report the amount of people that do come back in percentage? Just to make sure that not many people are leaving school early and not coming back?
Yep. So that happens a lot where you're trying something new and you say, "It's a good idea." We'll take a trial, right? So that's something that the city could consider. So you're talking about trial. You're talking about liability. You're talking about restricting it to junior and senior. So let's do, if Vanessa allowed it, let's do a roll call on the amendment, which is, um, open campus throughout the city. We heard the concerns raised, but open campus throughout the city for seniors and juniors. So if you vote yes, then you vote for an open campus for seniors and juniors. And if you vote no, then you vote against that, right? So let's ask the board for a roll call.
Clear for a roll call on City of Lynn. Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes? Councilor Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Koochi?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Lozzi?
No.
No. Councilor Ned?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Starwood?
No.
No. Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Stair?
Yes.
Yes.
She just sounds like a regular vote.
Right?
The motion passed.
Lozzi and Starwood. I've heard of them. Juniors and seniors will be there. So everybody is aware of the meeting in Field. Beautiful comments. Somebody has made a motion that we are going to have 20 concerts per year at Manning Field. So what happened? So that's the motion, right? So that's what we're going to talk about. That type of an issue is interesting because of WAD-1, which is where Manning Field is located physically. If you were the WAD-1 councilor, the neighbors that you represent that put you on campus, they definitely are close. So you would be hearing from them, somebody in Westland, not that they wouldn't care about the neighbors. They didn't put the WAD-7 councils in to get elected by the WAD-1 people.
Five in town.
Yep. I'll get back to him. So the Westland council would be saying, "Jeez, that's revenue for the city. We need it for the schools." So they may have a different perspective. WAD-5 is for you. So WAD-5 is the stadium condos. They have a big apartment building right by Manning Field. You would be getting those phone calls saying concerts. So one of the Westland guys over there made the motion. "We need money in the schools. We need more police officers. We need more firefighters. We need that revenue. We want to have 20 concerts at that big field." So that's what's on the table. So it kind of becomes, who would support the concerts at Manning Field? Juan? Okay. Um, great. Okay. So let's talk about that. So obviously, there are concerts here in the outer term. Have you been to concerts in the outer area, Chris? It's really, there's not a bad scene though. But Manning Field, when I was a kid, concerts were always there. And then a couple of bad incidents happened and the city said, "No." So let's talk about that. On the city council level here, who's far, if you're far, great speaker, if you're against it, great speaker, let's have a conversation. Who do you oppose?
Andy.
I have a question. What percentage of the revenue is going to go back to like the schools in the district?
So you hit like a key question. Because councils like to spend money. So they always want to say, "We want money. We want to designate it to certain areas," right? And so that, right now, it's going into the general fund. It's a little bit spread out up to the mayor of the council inside. So if you wanted to designate, say your pet project is offices walking the beat, something like that, you would say, "I'd like to make an amendment that 10% of the money goes to a playground or whatever the project is in want, or basketball, whatever the project is." So right now, to answer your question, it's just going into the city's general fund and it will be dispersed wherever the mayor of the council feels. Far against?
I don't believe it's a good idea because the disruption it'll cause in the surrounding wards as well as the potential traffic. I just, I don't understand how traffic and disruption will be taken into account.
To add to what Cody said, I could also think this is a bad idea because you said that there's, they've done the concerts there in the past. So if there was a bad instance that had happened, so what would stop that from happening again if they reintroduced the concerts at Manning?
Okay. Do you consider this? Yes.
Ms. Horstman? So my question is, how do you know that the city will make more revenue than it will, than like the cost of the concerts? Like, how would that affect the citizens when you have to pay more rent around the area or something? Like, how are you going to pay for that for the concerts? Especially this 20-year one?
Good question. So there's always a risk whenever you book an act. You don't know, right? When you bring in Jennifer Lopez, it's a normal sell-out. How much are your tickets? So I don't think we know that answer yet because we don't know what the acts are, how much they cost, and how many people are going to go to it. But your question is a little, because of the city's character, it's always, is it home to whose money? Or is it normally? Good question. Anybody else?
I need to make another motion, but is there any way we could possibly lower the number of those concerts per year? Say something more along the lines of five to 10? Just to see how the city does with can use concerts at Manning Field? Just to get a better understanding before anything goes full throttle or is completely throttle.
Good. So the amendment will say, say 20 to five. All right? So the amendment took a second on that amendment. Second to fourth. All right. So that amendment has a second amendment. So that means we're going to drop off the number of concerts, which is five. Is anybody concerned about the security? People going to the concerts, perhaps breaking out of the hours. People right next door. Okay, so your suggestions, we go down to five. Let's see how it works. Any discussion on lowering it to five?
Clear for a roll call?
On the amendment?
On the amendment?
If you're voting on whether or not we should have five concerts.
Uh, Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Chakutis?
Yes.
Councilor Koochi?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Field?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Ned?
Yes.
Councilor Starwood?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Stair?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
So in, just like, whatever we're voting on today will be forwarded to the city council. So they'll know that you voted on it and take it into consideration. So so far, we will have open campus for juniors and seniors for every school in the city. And we'll only have five concerts at Manning Field. That's what we've done thus far. Marijuana. So recreational marijuana has been legalized in the state. So let's talk about, from your perspective, do you want to have these stores in the city of Lynn?
No.
Right. That's fine. So let's say that, let's say, which person?
Cody.
I'm sorry?
Cody.
Cody? That you have made a motion that the city of Lynn did not have any. Even though it's legal, many cities have said, you know. So let's say that you made that motion that the city of Lynn, they will not be allowed. So that's what the motion is, that no recreational marijuana stores are allowed in the city. So anybody want to talk about this?
Yes.
Can I make an amendment that we limit the distance from public schools? They can be to like maybe 10 miles?
Did you say 10 miles? So that would look like a wind trail. Osh, osh. So it's in a lot of motions only because it's counter to the main motion, which is nowhere considered, right? You're saying, you're basically repeating it. It's 10 miles outside. But I, is there anybody? This doesn't mean that your personal preference. Is there anything that they should be allowed in this?
I just believe that if we allow these marijuana shops, that it'll raise revenue in the city. You can tax it as like alcohol and cigarettes as well. So, and that can raise revenue for other shops, like as food, especially for places as in like fast food here. You can raise revenue for those companies. And then that can provide more money for the city of Lynn.
Until there's a way to determine whether someone's driving or operating vehicle will hide, I would think that it's a good idea to allow marijuana sweatshirts in the city.
The audience, no thoughts on recreational marijuana being allowed in the city of Lynn?
I think it should be taken into account like the level of like consumption by the teenagers nowadays because I feel like that would affect cases, especially nowadays, like a lot of students do. So I think you should take that into account, like how that will affect the youth and like school-wise. And also like, it's legal, like state marijuana is legal in the states, but not like federally. So that's also another thing to take into account. Because let's say someone in high school has the product and they get caught by some like a federal police or something, like they get into serious trouble. So I guess kind of take into consideration the consequences of that.
Other question. So how many other like legal recreational marijuana shops are there in the North Shore? Do we know? Would we be the only one?
Great question. General Manager, could you please approach us? The question is, to the North Shore, how many cities have legalized?
Salem has one up and running right now. Although they have a legal issue with, I believe, they're temporarily closed. But the only one on the North Shore right now that's open is Salem. Peabody recreational is unlawful. Swans get behind, it's unlawful. Sawgus is, it's unlawful. The residents of the city of Lynn, back in 2016, actually approved it, probably about 54, 46%. So fairly significant voters who are taking recreational marijuana. And that limits the ability for the city to say no. Matter of fact, if the council were to say no, they would have to put it back on the ballot. So this honorable body wouldn't have that authority. They certainly couldn't recommend it going back on the ballot to have the second bite of the apple with the citizens, whether these recreational shops should be closed.
Thank you, General Manager. Councilor at that Field, would you like to address this issue just in detail?
I'm joined here with a few of my colleagues in the council. So just to clarify some of those important discussions that you guys have had today. Councilor Starwood chairs our Cannabis Commission here on council. And Councilor Hogan's here, he has a couple of approved recreational marijuana facilities in his particular board. And some of the issues that we face as councillors, I know Councilor Chakutis is familiar. When the state approved, the state Cannabis Commission put it on our city, saying that we can't say no to that. So whether we were in favor of it personally, the vote was in favor of it within the city. And the guidelines for the state Cannabis Commission makes us have to have no less than 20% ratio to liquor stores. Okay? So this is the law that we have to abide by. So what we are having is discussions as far as how far we can keep them away from schools. We have taken that discussion. It's recommended by the state that that be 500 feet. But in the city of Lynn, having it 500 feet would really pretty much eliminate it and expose us to the lawsuits. Okay? As a council, as a full council, and as a city. So we had to limit that down to 250 feet. So right now, the correct, 250 feet, 200 feet, I'm sorry. 200 feet away from public schools. So that's the circumference of the entire school. So there are mandates that are imposed on us from the state Cannabis Commission because the state allowed it. They approved it in a vote. And the city approved it. So other cities and towns that, but Lynn, Sawgus, Lynn Field, Peabody, their vote in the majority wasn't against recreational marijuana facilities. So they can still say yes or no. They have that right. But the state Cannabis Commission says to cities like Lynn that approved it in a vote, that we have to have it. We have to have no less than 20% ratio to liquor stores, liquor licenses that are available, which means we have to have eight. Any questions on that?
Can we impose restrictions on liquor stores to reduce the amount?
Liquor stores are also, they're regulated by statute. It's based on population. So we, based on our population, we allot 40 liquor stores in the city. We are out of capacity at this time. So that's set by state law. The council could, they're on the right house in the city, so in the state. So that is something that would be another discussion, another topic. Maybe the next year, former council president, Cal Del, could debate.
The, but last question. That's a great question because as Council Field said, the number of recreational marijuana stores in the city is directly related to how many liquor stores you have in the city, this percentage. So I'd like to think about that here right on target. Anybody else on this?
I feel this is almost, these shops are almost a better way to allow student, I'm asking, citizens of the city of Lynn to at least acquire marijuana in a safe, in a safe way, aside from trying to get it on the streets or from an unknown source and like stuff, maybe cases of maybe laced marijuana use and maybe certain deaths are related to that.
Other thoughts? So the city set up, as Brian said, a cannabis committee. And so everybody that is trying to open up a store, Council Starwood is the chairperson of this committee. They all get funded there. That's the first step. Councilor Starwood.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. So you have the Recreational Cannabis Site Plan Committee. And we've got quite a process when somebody wants to open one of these establishments. They come before I D D I C, which Mr. Cal Del heads up, to make sure that they've got the proper finances behind them, the proper team in place. We hold community meetings, speak to the board councillor. They come to the site plan committee for a presentation, make sure that they've got the proper security plans in place, experienced people to carry out the operation. From there, once it gets approved, they apply for a special permit. They come before a complete city council and a public hearing in this room where people get to speak either for or against the operation. The council's vote whether or not to approve that special permit. Once that step's complete, they go to the mayor's office and negotiate a host agreement, which has in the taxes that are paid to the city, what requirements the city may have on these dispensaries. And once that's done, they also need improvement from the Cannabis Control Commission of the state, which as of this point has been relatively slow in rolling out the opening of these stores. So we see what went on in Western Mass when the first dispensaries opened up. And it was manned with traffic. And right now, I think there are only 15 operating in the state. You know, there was an article that just came out saying that it hasn't affected the black market or the illegal supply market. And you know, too bad, you can say if the state only had 15 liquor stores open, I guess the moonshine business would be pretty good too. So we need to see the state start to roll these stores out in a more efficient manner so that the traffic concerns that we see won't be as impactful on a community. We've got the Lenway store open right now for medical use. They will probably be the first one to get a recreational approval to open, which will probably be sometime within the next couple of months. And I'm sure that once that store opens, we will see traffic, you know, especially in the beginning, up and down the Lenway. They're going to have to have off-site parking and all. But once the eight stores are open in Len, once the five stores are open in state and the novelty is kind of born off, then things, I think you'll start to see it more like a liquor store. And another issue that we face in the city is while residents of Len voted for it, we get what they call NIMBY, not my backyard. So they voted for the eight stores in the city. But when operators come to us for approval, folks don't want them, particularly in their neighborhoods. And we're at a point now where we have approved six of the eight. And the majority of those are in West Lynn. Now, we don't want businesses to fail. We don't want these businesses to cannibalize each other. We don't want to set up a situation where even East Lynn residents are running up to Highland Ave in Salem where there'll be two. Two are already approved for Highland Ave. So we need to find smart locations in East Lynn to house the last two. And that's becoming a challenge, especially in a city like Len that is so condensed. Parking is at a premium. The amount of available commercial space is at a premium. So it's challenging. But these last two, I think we have hands full to try to figure it out. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Have the six that have already been approved have like construction in Starwood or no?
They're starting. They're building up. They're building up phases now. But I think they all, other than the Lenways, still have to sign the host agreements. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this has, this has actually been a vote of the city council in the past. Change from the subject. St. Mary's, I believe, has addressed Cody, right? In no other school in the city has a dress code. Kip has a dress code, right? Thank you. So Classical, English, Tech, no dress code, right?
There.
Sorry. Got my attention?
There is a dress code in the county.
There is?
No shirt arms, but there is.
So there's like, this guy that can't wear a T-shirt.
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Let's say somebody has made a motion for the three high schools, Blue Classical, Lenny Bush, and Lynn Tech. Those three high schools should implement a, you know, a dress code, a uniform code, right? So that similar thing is as far as the, she knows, or, I'm trying to say, she knows, tan pants and blue tops. So let's put that on the table. That actually has been voted on by the board even first. Let's talk about somebody that made a motion that there be a uniform code for those high schools. How do you feel about that? Who supports it? The whole room behind you. Nobody agrees. Who said yes? Yes, correct.
Where would we get the uniforms if we installed a policy for our schools?
Whoever made the motion set aside funds so that if somebody couldn't afford a uniform, the city would provide the money to pay for the uniform. Outside of that, it would be up to the parents to purchase a uniform. If you're against it, let's hear what?
In my opinion, it seems a very unnecessary motion to begin with. I know that in other nations, there are public school uniforms. But in America, particularly in Len, I don't see why that would be unnecessarily. I know that for some students from the local families, perhaps they couldn't afford uniforms. I know that they were stuck on setting aside funds, but not in every circumstance that could be arranged. And I believe there would be better use of that money than to provide uniforms that have no real bearing on... that have no real bearing on a student's education.
I have a question about how these funds are gotten. Are they from the taxpayers or from, are they from the person who acknowledged the amendment of law, I guess?
Right, so it would be from the taxpayers.
So I think I'm in opposition to this. I mean, like personally, like I look very uniformed, but I think it just doesn't seem practical to say like, all of a sudden, like you have to wear a uniform, maybe like in a year in advance, like over next school year, we're gonna implement uniforms. But I know also in like other cities, I think you were bare, like up until high school, you have to wear a polo and dress pants. Doesn't matter what color, like I've been wearing anything, but then when you're going to high school, you can wear, um, or any of those. So I don't know if that's something to be considered or really, I don't understand like why they're trying to start this.
So it's interesting, because you come from a school where there is a being policy in place, right?
Right.
But you're opposed to it?
Right.
Okay. So tell, educate me as far as, how does it work in St. Mary's? What is the policy?
So we have blue polos with the St. Mary's logo, and then you can wear khakis or blue pants. And that's from sixth grade to twelfth grade. I've worn a uniform my whole life, so I personally like it's easier, but I think that it would be impractical, I guess, to just start, I don't know. Or what's the reasoning for it? Like, why are they saying, why, what's the person's, I guess, reasoning for starting to wear uniforms?
I think it was more to feel like unity for the school, you know, as far as everybody is dressed the same, everybody's the same. I think, I figured maybe that a long time ago, but that was the reason, they just wanted to feel together.
Personally, I don't believe that a uniform would be a good idea, because it distracts administration, it distracts from things that should be really disciplined and should have consequences, and it needs dress code, catching someone for being out of dress code, the number one priority on this, other things that need to be disciplined in the school as well.
I just feel like as though there's just more pressing matters than to schools. And aside from just having to wear a school uniform, I feel like we're spending money in the wrong places, I feel like. Especially since the taxpayer money is not money that's like privately owned or privately acquired, that it's just, this money should be spent more on things that would be better virtualized than like, as technology or very, let's just say better bathrooms, stuff like something like that, like where the students can use and where we can see like improvements.
Good. Any thoughts? Yes?
I think that, I think that we should have the uniforms, because they build discipline and unity throughout the school. And also for the fact that out of personal experience at English, rather than sending a kid home for having ripped in their jeans, it would be much easier to correct them and tell them that like a part of their uniform isn't correct and that they can, how to fix it there rather than having to send them home to get changed because they were wearing yoga pants rather than sweatpants.
I feel as though if we're trying to prep, especially talking about high school kids, if we're trying to prep high school kids for us at college and for the real world, you don't have uniforms like that in college. You kind of just wear whatever. So I think to kind of, it's all, and it's also restrictive in freedom, that they can wear whatever they want, of course, as long as it follows the guidelines. And personally, I feel like at English, the guidelines aren't strict at all. You know, just don't wear ripped jeans and don't show your shoulders. It's super simple and it's pretty easy to follow, and I see no problem.
Does it talk about t-shirts in, perhaps a t-shirt could be offensive to somebody? Does it address that?
No, he, I know the rule is as long as there is no, I think there's no swears or guns or any sort of violent situation on a graphic t-shirt, it is acceptable.
I, I'm a person who was worn uniforms her whole life, straight from kindergarten up till senior year. I have seen so many unnecessary, coming back to the discipline with, there is so much focus and time spent on catching students out of dress code that there is a distinct lack of focus on other activities and other disrupt, disruptions in a school day. And of course, there should be a certain degree of professionalism, maturity in student attire at public schools, but I see no reason to implement such a strict uniform such as happens in private school. Because private schools and public schools are different in that way. Whereas private schools are privately run, the city obviously runs public schools. I just see no reason why they should adopt private school type of thing.
In, that motion failed years ago, and the reason why it failed was there were several hundred students that came to council chambers in opposition to it, and a lot of them were set, were set by students and stuff. I don't know more subject. And so sometimes the world we live in can be a scary world, right? How many people feel safe at their schools? I mean, do, many people are scared, when you hear about shootings in schools and things like that. Many people feel a bit scared, right? So there was, there has been a discussion, never form a motion, but there's been discussions about putting metal detectors in all schools. And so let's kind of, just have discussion on that, pros and cons. Who would support putting metal detectors in every school in the city? Nobody. All right. If you're opposed to what's put, so everybody, apparently, is opposed to reasons.
I believe that if someone with malicious intent wanted to enter a school, I don't believe a machine such as a metal detector would have, would make a difference in stopping them achieving their goal. It might, it might catch other things that can be disciplined, but I don't know. If, if safety of students is the number one priority, I don't think that's gonna have a big effect on the discipline.
I feel like the metal detectors would be somewhat inaccurate to the point that they would find like watches or batteries or something in someone's backpack, like a pen that's made of metal that would create too many false alarms to really be useful. Because you'd have to search every backpack that had that just to be safe that there was no weapons.
Going off of that, it could catch things like a hydro flask, water bottles, and that could cause unnecessary tardies for students that perhaps don't have understanding of what teachers, that they were detained, looking for, basically sent to the end of a school chase. There definitely needs to be safety measures implemented, because it is a scary reality that there is a chance that someone with malicious intent could enter a school and harm students. But I don't see how a metal detector could really cause, it would cause more problems, I think, than solutions.
Okay.
Do you agree with that?
One? There's two. So that's okay. So what would happen in the real world? There's two speakers, one would speak and one would get behind that person, they would speak next. One up. Metal detectors, what's your opinion?
I would just say that a lot of times at schools, I know at classical, there's a sometimes a long tardy line. And I think metal detectors could slow that down, so the start time for school might have to be earlier and there'd be a longer line outside of the schools for students to get in, so that could be a concern.
Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly how much metal detectors cost, but I'm sure it's pretty significant. And if we acknowledge the fact that at St. Mary's, for example, although students bring iPads, some students bring laptops too. So if the metal detector sets off, will go off when it senses an iPad or laptop as well, the only way to tell the difference is to be searching the back. So it wouldn't really make, you know, when you don't have to pay for metal detectors in the first place, we can just do bag searches across the board. If we want to monitor what kids are bringing into the school, it might be an unnecessary finance.
Good, thank you. Let's go back to the audience, one second. Metal detectors.
And if we start at metal detectors, where can we start at? There are many high schools in Pennsylvania where they have implemented metal detectors into their high schools. And then because that hasn't seemingly worked, they removed backpacks too, and they've not had kids bring in plastic bags. And that's making kids feel as though the high schools, they would learn unsafe space when they should feel welcomed at the high school to learn and be ready.
I feel like even if there were metal detectors, the criminals would just find new ways to upgrade weapons into the school that perhaps wouldn't get detected through it. Like there would just be new ways to cause harm.
Where would the funding come forward with these metal detectors?
It's interesting, because there are council fields here, council organs here, council staff is here. So generally speaking, whenever there's an idea presented, right, and it could be the best idea in the world in America. You could say, I want to add a hundred new school teachers, right, to, so that the average class drops from twenty-seven to twenty-four, something, you know? What you just said is always the crux of the problem, which is, great idea, where does the money come from? And that generally is a lot of time behind that grilling, is a discussion of trying to prioritize the city budget and trying to figure out a way to spend that money. So I don't know where the money would come from. So, and, you know, woman who spoke, two speakers ago, raised that question when I wrote down, which is the cost, right? How much would it cost to put metal detectors? It would be, pick a number, four hundred thousand, I don't know that number, but do you take that from the schools? Do you take it from the police? Do you take it from the fire? And that's what happens behind this railing, those types of discussions.
So I know that there's other high schools in Massachusetts that have metal detectors. So are there any like statistics on like, have they been successful? Like have they caught things that probably wouldn't be caught if they didn't have a metal detectors? Have they been proven to be worth the money?
Yes, I think the discussion focused on, is it effective, right? How much does it cost? And is it infringement? Where does it stop, right? Where does it keep going? So that's where that discussion would take place, what just happened. So I think you have a feel of what happens here, right? And like I said at the very beginning, everything that is really important to you, if you live in the city, happens right here. And that's why these councils are here, are critical, and it's important. How many, how many folks in this room are eighteen registered to vote it's critical? That how your voices are, as well as mandatory vote. So listen, we'll wrap it up now, just chill. Somebody's going to come up here and they don't want you to bring them back to room three or two, which is one floor down. So you'll see how the school community operates. So we'll just chill here until somebody comes and grabs you, and we'll be in the next seven minutes. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. Why are you against it?
It doesn't like express people's like personal, like it doesn't let people express themselves. Like how they, where they're posed is how we usually express ourselves, and that's why.
Good. Other thoughts?
I also agree to what she said, because I feel like a dress code, like she said, really doesn't like, showing what a person is really like, I don't know. Like I feel like a person should dress however they want to dress. Like there's people that have like religious reasons why they dress, cultural, like, you know, reasons why they dress. I feel like everybody should just be themselves, they should be, you know, obligated to be themselves, that's how I feel.
What if they, what, I'm just throwing this off. They express themselves, and they offend somebody, right? So what would your reaction be?
I, yeah, that's true too, like, obviously, like, obviously, like, go overboard, go crazy, like, obviously, like, I'm against like, like getting things like durans or like bandanas, stuff like that, like that's obviously unacceptable. You know what I'm saying? Like, but my biggest point is like, there's people from different places other than like, like they come from maybe Africa, Haiti, Iraq, you know, that this is different, like, you know, I feel like they should be able to feel like home.
I feel like with dress code, it all depends on what the dress code is. So have you guys came up with like a specific dress code that you would want these Lynn students to follow?
Okay, so the schools that have a dress code, who should go on first? Can you describe the dress code to the room?
Um, so we don't really have a specific dress code, we wear khakis, that's St. Mary's polo. And on Fridays, we're allowed to wear our St. Mary's merchandise. Like if you play sport, you're allowed to wear your jacket or shirt or anything. And it's not, it's not really too strict, but we do need to have the St. Mary's logo on at all times. And personally, I am somewhat against the dress code. I agree that there should be rules to like what dress code students follow, like not to offend anyone, but there also comes to the fact that dress code, like buying a uniform costs money, and some people may not be able to afford a uniform if they go to public schools, because they can't, the school can't pay for everyone's uniform, seeing as a lot of districts is overcrowded. So it's, they're gonna be paying for like over a thousand students' uniforms, kids would have to pay for that.
So at St. Mary's, the boys and the girls, both, we have T M slacks, we'll vote?
Yes.
So let's say that the motion before us was for that dress code. So it has that classical, T M pants, white balls. And if a kid can't afford it, there would be a fund set up so that the city would provide the funds. Still against it? I'm just throwing that off the session.
So I'm responding to you. I feel like if a school wants you to wear a certain uniform, I feel like they should, you know, come out of their pocket for it. They, that's what they want for their school, then they have to support that policy.
So then, a lot of times, and the council's gonna appreciate this, a lot of times, let's say, let's just say that this was a great idea, a lot of times it comes down to where you, where you pay for it, and if it's the city, where do you get the money? Right? Every kid getting a uniform, say that's two hundred thousand dollars, you would take that from the school department, it would take it from the police department. And that's the discussion that happens all the time in this state, where do you get the money for the tapkins? Other thoughts on, on your own?
I feel like if we can't come up with the money, it shouldn't be something that's like enforced. So like if people aren't gonna be able to pay, like Amara said, it shouldn't be something that is an obligation to students. I feel like dress code is very important on many levels, because it's like, you know, as, you don't want to be offensive, and you also want to be in an environment where students can learn, but you also want to be able to express yourself. So I think like recently, the problems I've been hearing with dress code is like a lot of girls have been told that like, you know, some of the things they wear isn't appropriate for school, or no rips in jeans and things of that sort. And I guess my question to any of the people who agree with that dress code or have helped enforce it is what distractions does it really create in school? And like, why is it so overpoliced to the point where like, sometimes you get sent home or like you just can't wear it in school?
So when this was brought before the council years ago, a lot of things that we just said was brought up. Generally, your point, we kind of stifles some of these creativity, being individual, who's talked about, who's paying for it, so people that don't have kids in the school department, want their tax bill to go on there, but we don't have that. But what happened was about three or four hundred kids showed up, students showed up, saying they don't want to see. To switch gears just for a second on a different subject. So scary world sometimes in the limit, right? You hear about school shootings. How many people feel safer in this school system? There's no wrong answer. How many people worry about school safety? Okay. So this, this again was really brought before this body at one point in time. There was a motion made for metal detectors in all schools, in all schools, lots of it. Any thoughts, good, bad, and anybody else who agrees with it?
Um, I feel like, like, I feel like it's like a good idea, but then again, I feel like it's a bad idea. Only because it's just like, I feel like that's like scary, like the students learn, like, like students have to be like, students should have to feel scared to go to school. Like, you know what I mean? But I also feel like that's a good idea because it's just like, you never know what someone's capable of. You never know what someone's thinking about doing, you know what I mean? So I would enforce that, to be honest, if I was asking what I just think.
I agree with her, I think, um, they.
No, no, you have a, so, so just, I want to, so in, in the council meeting, this, this position is a very powerful position. The council president, he or she appoints all the committees that the council is here serving, and he or she is in charge of the body. And so, uh, from a, from a parliamentary rules, uh, perspective, they, it's really set up so that the council is limited, the council president is limited on speaking because when he or she speaks, the body tends to really take that. You know what I'm saying? And so usually what would happen is if the council president wants to speak, the vice president, who was councilbackman, would come up. The council president would come down and speak. It doesn't happen very often. Where is, council staff, does it happen very often?
Yeah.
So it doesn't happen too often. Uh, so I just wanted to, to bring it up. He or she has the same right as you to speak, but they try not to. I wasn't intended that happen, but it's.
But I agree with you, like, I think it will make a lot of people feel safer just in case there was that chance. But at the same time, it's kind of scary, like going to school every day, you have to get checked with a metal detector. But I mean, if you're gonna feel safer and know that, like, there's not weapons coming into school for the most part, like, that's gonna make you feel safer going to school and parents feel more.
Um, I also agree with that. Um, and I, I agree that it would be scary to like have to get checked with a metal detector every day, but it would also be scarier to find out that there's a weapon and on a student in a classroom too. So I think it's a good idea that we have metal detectors, especially with, um, the rates of like, like, violent things happening in school going on so much nowadays, that's important to have them.
Yeah, so I'm definitely for, um, metal detectors mainly because I know it may, uh, may give the school like a look that, um, kind of towards negative things and like it may make a student feel unsafe. But I think having that metal detector could ultimately save the kids' lives. And I think that's just way more important.
Yeah, I have a question. What's that offer, like, if you were saving them throughout the school?
Yeah, so, that's a good question. So, uh, when it was brought before the council before, it's almost like a doorway, like a washroom, and then somebody is on the other side that staffs it. So that if you have something on you that sets about, then they have a wand, they try to narrow down where it is. Look, before we get to you, remind me that you asked a question. How many people think that there are today kids in the schools that have a weapon? Could be nice, could be.
Think about that, right? How effective would it be to have a metal detector in our school in the morning? Like, wouldn't that just cause like a long line of kids and like a waste of time? Like essentially a waste of time in the beginning of the morning? When we have to spend the day later on? Because I bet there's a bunch of children that are wearing belts, and that's probably contrived. Or adding some backpack to a belt and bag? Like, how effective would it be if we needed to waste time?
So, so, may I have a question? So, it's a great question. Prior to nine eleven, airport security was, was real minimal. You went there half an hour before you fight, you were gone, right? Now, because of nine eleven, all these security measures are there, you need to get the airport two hours before you. So I bring that up because it def, it is, you're weighing the, the, the extra time that it's going to cost, right? Versus the safety that it brings to the table. So it, it's a, it's a great question, but that, that's what this body would be creating. That's a great question.
So I think the, the, um, metal detectors, as everyone's saying, like, it can be really like ensuring it can make people feel secure. But then there's this other aspect of like over policing that like we don't want to get into, right? Like, if students are coming in, like, if it's like triggering, um, like anything that, say like someone has a body piercing, right? Um, and it triggers the metal detector, then what will happen? Will you check it? Like, that's inappropriate. And then it's like, also, it makes people feel like they're not trusted in school. If someone's like coming up to them every single day, "Let me check the metal, oh, what's that sound? Let me just check it again." And it's just like, that makes me feel like my school thinks I'm gonna do something bad. But then again, I get you guys' point of like, you know, I need to protect the students. So it's like, there needs to be a balance. And I think that with like healthy schools and like good schooling, like, and, and like loving and trusting your students, like you won't feel the need to, to do that. But then again, you can't understand everybody's heart, that's never.
So on that note, when I asked a question about how many folks thought that there, there were kids today that had weapons in the school, and most of the, most of the students here said that they felt today that there were weapons in the school, right? So if it's not metal detecting, what would be the body in school? Any other ideas that you would come up with to, to make everybody safer in schools?
Oh, um, I honestly feel like it's a shame that like schools have to, like, try to put like, um, metal detectors inside of school because at the end of the day, eh, we're going to school to learn. You know what I'm saying? So I feel like putting metal detectors inside of, inside of a school just throws everybody off, you know what I'm saying? I feel like there's other, there's other ways that we can check to see if anybody has anything to harm anything, anybody inside of the school. You know what I'm saying? Like, we could check the backpacks or, you know what I'm saying? Like, anything, you know what I mean? I feel like metal detectors is like kind of overboard. But then again, you just never know what someone could really do. So I'm just like in the middle of like, you know what I mean?
Um, our manager just walked in and he reminded, sorry, reminded me. Since he's been mayor, said to, uh, kind of really give a safer vibe in here at City Hall, we have now security cameras for all City Hall, and backlogs as well, and made carpets. We all, every employee has an employee badge. So if something were to happen, the police know that who the employees are. So that there's those types of measures. We, we do not have metal detectors. But I can tell you, Mike, from working here at the pre and post, our mayor, that this is a much safer environment, so. What else, any other thoughts?
Um, I feel, I feel the issue with safety in going into the school would have to start with the community. But it's happening in our community as soon as people like, oh, I have to, I have to go to school. Or, you know, stuff like that. Because sometimes it's not the school itself, it's something happening outside of the school. Maybe it's, um, you know, me that have a student at the school that has really done the job for the school itself. But some that's like outside, like, took it to school because that's really seen them. So I feel like the one step that we should be in addition to if we are going to have, um, metal detectors or whatever, if we, I think, is to, partly make our community safer and so that people don't feel the need to have to resort to those kind of things in, in a school.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
Um, so, as Anne Marie was saying, like, it starts with the community. And like, also not, I think, like, it's another thing. Not everyone who carries a weapon is out to hurt people. I think it also may be a form of self-defense. Um, so it's like, just like how, like, we, in America, like, we have the right to bear arms, right? It's like, that's a thing. And like, some people are like, that's not okay because it makes me feel unsafe. Like, this situation is the same situation in schools. And if students are gonna be carrying weapons on them, that's not okay. But then again, like, Anne Marie said, you have to think about why students would ever choose to do that, like. And, and not like, not like, you know, be like, okay, so because you're carrying a weapon on you, you're automatically trying to hurt someone? Like, maybe really like have a process where you ask them, like, what's going on? Like, no matter what, it's not okay, but like, there also needs to be some sort of understanding too. We all know that over the years, Lynn has not been the safest city. So like, if we just start cracking down on it like that, I don't feel like it's gonna be a successful initiative.
Okay, other thoughts?
And I feel like honestly, like, if you feel unsafe at a school, you know what I mean? Like, there's always somebody to talk to about it. Like, I don't feel like bringing a weapon to school is helping anything. Like, it's not helping any of the problems. And if you feel like you have to bring a weapon to school, then find a different school, you know what I mean? Like, bringing a weapon to school is just out of line, you know what I mean? Like, there's, there's different ways to fix a problem other than trying to harm somebody, like, and like protection. You're going to school to, to be, like, you're going to school to learn. You're going to school to be taught by a teacher. There shouldn't be no violence at school. So if you feel like you have to bring a weapon to school, there's obviously a problem and something can be done about it rather than hurting somebody or bringing a weapon to school.
New subject. Open the campus. So, there is a, a motion made in this body to have open campuses for high schools. For, so that means lunchtime, you can be doing English, leave to the store, you go to the John's Home speaking, grab whatever, grab. You can do that. Other thoughts on open campuses for all of the high schools?
Um, I would say for, but I think it all just depends on the trust that you have in the students. Um, you know, like even just coming back into the school after they, uh, they get access to leave. Um, just something like that, just having that trust in the students that like, when they leave the school, within that period of time, they're gonna be doing the right thing and then coming back. I feel as though it would be abused if that was a right given to all students. Although I am for if there is some sort of limitation, maybe if it is given like privilege instead of just like a right to everyone. If it is a privilege given to seniors or higher student, honorable students, that's more acceptable than just giving it to everyone because there will always be those people that just abuse it and do it at least.
I'm for it, as long as there's a, 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 just in a place of a marmer that's around. We say open the IDs and make loads of like a checkout thing, where you say, take, take down this wing lead and then when you come back, you know you're, you're trusting each other. Well, so, you know, a lot of these are the system.
Um, I also agree with, um, that gentleman in the, um, audience or whatever. I understand where he's coming from because I just feel like we should just leave that up to like college students, you know what I mean? Like, that's a kind of like a, I don't know what other, what other schools do that, open campus thing. But I feel like, Lynn's schools, like, honestly, they don't, not, I'm not gonna say they don't have the privilege to, but the way that everything's set up, like, they fail it. You know what I'm saying? Like, they don't give up the teachers or like the principal enough, like, you know, enough like trust for them to do that. So I feel like we should leave that up to like college students, meaning adults, that can handle it.
So what, hold on one sec. So what would happen, right? Is they would win this discussion? And then somebody may ask this question, which Jim O'Malley is the city, uh, city attorney. So we would ask Jim, come to the podium. So, attorney O'Malley, the, the discussion that the councils are having, you know, we should stop, by the way. Everything that we're discussing will be forwarded to the municipal council. And they will know what we discussed, and they will consider it. So Jim, we're discussing open campus.
Yep.
From, from a legal perspective, um, is there any liability concerns? Like, let's say a kid gets into a car, a student student gets into a car, it's a mother off campus building. Is there any liability from this?
Absolutely, that he could be liable. Someone could, uh, while they're out for lunch. So something, absolutely should be considered.
So that, so, so I, I want, just to show you that in this process, many kinds of, there is a legal question in, or how to, and the process.
I think it also depends on like the population of students here because you can't keep track. Um, if your whole, if your entire school's going out for lunch, you can't really keep track how many students are going to lunch. And so like, I agree with, uh, maybe maybe get a privilege for like seniors or upper classes, juniors and seniors, like, they have the ability to go to lunch. And speaking of my building versus, maybe they should be able to like get in a car or like it has to be around the area, like within a certain distance of the school that they're not allowed to go.
So, in, a lot of times, like on that, um, somebody, so the motion would be to allow open campuses, and then the discussion happens. And then somebody like this up and say, well, that gentleman's, uh, to, uh, make a motion, make an amendment to the motion where it's either merit paid or it's limited to just seniors, and then that can synthesize.
Okay, so at our school, a class school, we have like privileged study halls. So if you're in those privileged study halls, like, I feel like if you're allowed to be in a privileged study hall, then you can go do that. But you also, like, I don't know, it's just like legal, but like, if you get a permission, like, like the parents approve of it, then you can go.
And I also like agree with, um, Brian, I feel. I also agree with her because I feel like, like with the senior, like the upper class, like, I don't feel like other students in high school should get that privilege because of like, you know, they can still be minors or whatever. I feel like eighteen and up should, if you're not gonna make that appointment or whatever, it shouldn't be like older, like eighteen and up, and, and older. Cause like, we're legal adults now, you know what I'm saying? And I feel like the school are, um, how should I, they're responsible of, like, the minors. Other than, you know, they're, they're responsible for everybody in their school. But eighteen year olds are legal adults at this point, you know what I'm saying? So they don't have full power over them. You know what I mean? Like, they was to get a job outside of school, like, they won't even call your parent. Like, you're an adult now, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just to add on to that point, like, um, teenagers, like, brains aren't developed. And like, a lot of studies show that, like, teenagers aren't able to think ahead. And like, they're, like, mostly just focused on themselves and how they feel about issues. So it's like, um, if you're putting people who like just aren't really developed humans yet into the world when you don't really have control over them, like, that is a liability, not just like, you know, like he said, like law wise, but also just like, what would they be doing? And especially like with the rise in like, um, e-cigarettes and like things of that sort, like, students might be engaging in some like negative behaviors. So just to limit that, like, I think it should just be students who are the same.
Okay, um, there was, yeah.
So, I, I don't think it's a good idea because we have a lot of students, um, like, they're just coming back to class, and that's another issue that you have to worry about. Like, who's back at high school, who's in the line, who's missing without a ball? Because it's still the school name. And I also think that it should be responsible, we have the high schools providing our largest students, very much so. It's not, it's not like it's, um, a college-style, um, education where you can't just like classes and, you know, colleges have the students to do their practical. It's just separate.
Um, let's switch. So man of the field, everybody know what man of the field is?
Yeah.
So this, this has come up in the past as well. Um, primarily used as a sports facility with soccer or football or whatever. Um, let's say that somebody has made a motion that they want to have, uh, city use money, and the council came up with this idea to have ten outdoor concerts. Do you think, yes?
I don't think that it.
Can you, sorry, can you read that?
Yep, so man of the field.
Yes.
Uh, the city is the one that you pay for to bring in musical acts, and you're gonna have, say, ten outdoor concerts.
Okay.
To spread yourself.
Um, I don't think it would be a bad idea. I would be in, um, like, for it. Um, I know that in the past, there have been concerts there. I think at one point, I heard from a family member that if it was like the Rolling Stones perform there at one point in time.
Rolling Stones, in nineteen, he was fired, and, no, I wasn't before, right? Rolling Stones, maybe a bit of them. So when they were first, uh, in nineteen sixty-eight, uh, they played Queen of Hearts.
Yeah, and so I don't think there would be any issues having to have like concerts there and like for the benefit of the city as well. One issue in mind that people might have would be like parking or like limitations on who can be allowed into the stadium. have would be like parking or like limitations on who can be allowed into the stadium, like where would they park it across traffic or?
So, so on that point, so uh, Jen would go to Waterman Council, Manning Field is located in Waterman. So, how how about, so that council, right, is going to get fifty phone calls from people that live right there that say, I wanna do some of that music. So, now she had that perspective, right, because she represents that area, right? The Westland contingent already can't like be saying, we need one. So, they're not really listening to the person who lives right next door. And that's when a lot of debates happen, you know, different perspectives.
You guys, where it's like if there are football games going on or soccer games, there will be fans cheering either way. So, there will be fans cheering whether it be at a concert or a sporting event. So, volume, I know volume, but first when there's concerts involved as well, but there wouldn't be too big of a difference.
And then maybe Jen would say, okay, I think start the council, but how about we restrict the hours so that it's not midnight when Jennifer will go to the cinema? Jay was. All right. Other perspectives on concerts on that? Good idea, better idea?
I would like to see what happened. Like, when there's when there's sports events at Manning Bowl, there's always noise, and it's like the same kind of thing that happened. And people think about going to airports, they're gonna have to listen to the airplanes fly overhead, which makes noise. But people have to be already like ready for that. It shouldn't be expecting it because like they chose to live there. Like, you know, a lot of them try to settle.
Yep. Good point. Thank you.
Uh, another question, uh, where would we get the money to bring in these uh tax or acts to come in and perform at the field?
So, we, the city is, the only city that I know of that has an audit current, right, in City Hall. So, we do that set, right? So, we we the funds are self-sufficient if our concerts generally make money, which allows the city to go do the next act and so on and so on. So, that is not as much.
I just, I think, um, like it's like up and coming, like, we're trying to make it more modern. And I think of like bringing concerts in, and I think that's gonna bring a lot of good attention and make Lynn more mon- modern, like we're trying to. So, I think it's a good idea to have the concerts, but the time restrictions do seem like.
Last one, this one.
Uh, also, we have to think about like if we do have these concerts, like, right now, like gentrification is a really big thing in Lynn. And the more we continue to have these, like, you know, it's raising our like um our value, but then also like it's inviting people from outside of our community to be like, oh, Lynn's such a cool place, let me go live there. And right now, like, there's people who are low income that are struggling to like stay in Lynn, like this is their city, this is where their family's from. So, I think that like if we're bringing in all these new attractions, we have to be cognizant of the people it's affecting, not just noise levels, but also like where are they gonna live? Like, con- like houses next to the uh Manning Bowl is now like thirty thousand dollars more there.
Yep.
You know, there's a lot that comes into it.
Thank you. Um, so if you were city councils, I'm a little bit of a product myself, I wanna raise it when you're possible, um, what would you do? One of the challenges we face, city councils that are here, but it's about this one, um, I suppose, one of the challenges we face on a daily basis is the image, right? People that live outside of Lynn, a lot of times I only hear about that's not wrong. I think it's a great city, but I just do my own. What would you do as councils to improve the image that we have in the city? Any ideas? How come we got people outside of them who would that is for?
Well, I think there's already been so many initiatives um in Lynn to like bring awareness to all the great things that are happening in Lynn. Um, I know that um somebody that I know, her name is Cindy Dawn, and she actually runs this thing called Faces of Lynn, which um highlights people in Lynn who have been doing really great things within our community. So, giving those people a platform instead of people who like write news about the negative things that are happening would create more of a positive um image of Lynn.
She's just been a wonderful woman.
Yeah, she's amazing. Word six council.
She just did a, what, I don't know, something I personally.
Um, I also agree with her as well. And I just wanna add that, like, I feel like not just Lynn, like, goes to all these crazy things, like, there's other cities that also that people talk about that they have all these bad things going on, like, we live in the city, so we know what what good things happen in the city, like, forget about what other people think, you know what I mean? Like, we know who does a great job, like, you know what I mean? Like, I just feel like people should just continue what they're doing, like doing the great things for their city or whatever, keep it up. And people that are real and that notice us will understand where we're coming from and that we try.
Um, I also agree with uh making like citizens like aware of like the great things we have going on in Lynn. And I know that there was stuff being brought up recently about the waterfront in Lynn, 'cause a lot of stuff's going down uh down there. And I know stuff's trying to be built down there, 'cause we do have like an amazing waterfront and just bring up the lily way, and it would bring a lot of access and a lot of attraction to the city as well. I just want to know what was being done with that at the moment.
So, there's a lot of big things going on in the city right now. Downtown Lynn, on Monroe Street, is a ninety million dollar development project. Uh, if you ride down Monroe Street now, you can see it on the Asian K-4. It's gonna take about eighteen months to build, it'll be ten stories high. First was going to be retail stores in the grocery shop and office above. On the waterfront, there's a ninety-five million dollar project that shall be in the running in about two months. And and there'll be a harbor walk for the public to enjoy uh along there. So, eventually, that part of the lily way is going to be like lynch drive to the water there. So, uh, it's a lot of good things.
And just add another thing, like, you see like this, like, a lot of stuff going on, like, like, for instance, like, we have a market basket now, like, people don't wanna say little or many, or what, they come to Lynn and shop at the the new market basket, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's there has been a lot of great stuff happening, something like that. People just fail to notice, like, they wanna bring up, you know, all the bad things that happen when there's literally good things that happen in the city. And I feel like it shouldn't be noticed, like, we shouldn't have to keep trying to prove ourselves, like, there's things happening in Lynn, like, we're making it happen. I just feel like we should just get noticed for the good things that are actually happening.
So, one thing about market baskets, so when this, the city council, the real councils that are here, when they voted on that project, they demand from market basket priority higher for Lynn uh residents. So, there's four hundred jobs, uh three hundred, and I wanna say ten more like for free second one of Lynn residents. And so, that's something that you'll see there, jobs and preference, something that people live here. Um, the young, on that subject of marketing Lynn, I challenge you, you're you're the leaders of the schools, but you're the best of the best. When you're up there in the real world, defend our city, it is a great city, help people. I think that's all a lot of jobs.
I agree.
All right. The last one. So, this was a real uh issue debate before this one. Um, this was years ago, people were worried about safety, they were worried about the communities of the city in Lynn, and the council came up with a curfew right there. He said, in some months, July, August, that's the end of your work, this was a lot of that. Uh, in some months, July and August, from eight o'clock on, you know, Sunday night, anybody under the age of seventeen could not be on the streets. Who you guys think of that? And that was actually debated right there. Far against it?
I feel like um that's been a thing, you know, like, as they go on up in Lynn, like, you know, there used to be like a lot of parties, like, back around, like, you know, like middle school days or whatever, like, there would be a lot of kids, like, you know, under the age of eighteen walking the streets, like after parties. So, I feel like that's been a thing. And um, I'm not against that at all, I feel like that's, you know, more of a reason for cops to or anybody like police to be looking on.
Who do you think? Seventeen or nothing? Some months, you can't pull that eight o'clock?
Um, I feel like in a way, it's not really fair to the kids under seventeen because they're not the issue on the face. So, like, if kids are wandering around, those kids are getting punished for it. Sort of like, say you're like twelve and you wanna hang out with your friends outside in your neighborhood, you're all playing like manhunt in the dark or like capture the flag or or whatever. I know I used to do that a lot when I was a kid with my neighbors. And I feel it's not it's not really, like, it's doing it's doing the benefit, like, it's um keeping those kids safe, but I feel like in a way it's also punishing them, especially when it's their summer time and they're like, they have more time to go out and enjoy the city. And I feel like it's not really punishing the ones, like, the the older people in the city who are doing, like, causing issues.
So, you said in the months of July and August?
Yes.
Um, and you can't be out later than eight o'clock?
Yes.
Um, in the summer, the sun literally does not go down until like, sometimes ten P.M. is like when it's really dark. And like nine o'clock, that's like when the sun is really like going down in its sunset. So, I think that like to, that would personally to me be a punishment because like students in Lynn work so hard during the school year. And um I think as citizens of Lynn, we deserve to be on our streets if we're not causing any ruckus, to just live and hang out. I know there's a pa- a park right across from my street, and I know if I was hanging out with my friends there and not doing anything bad, no illegal activity, I would hate to be told to go into my house at eight P.M. when the sun is still up. So, I would, I would, I think that like um maybe there should be more of a focus on like, uh, like people are saying, on the people who are doing the bad things, but not the children who are just enjoying themselves.
I think also, how would I even do the training?
So, I'll I'll address that one second. Any other kind of time, yes?
Um, what if there's like sports teams and stuff too, under the age of seventeen, the kids that are playing sports are exposed to stalking you after like the fourth game because it's past eight o'clock?
So, so those are all all fear and peril. And so, when the body addresses, I think the council would make a motion, had intentions at the time, um, but all of these reasons came up, you know, was voted eleven, none, after, personally made a motion changes, right? Um, so it was voted eleven, nothing against how you enforce it, school activity, uh, soccer, soccer game, uh, punishment, you know, maybe they're punitive. So, all of those reasons. But so, it's that type of discussion that happens here. Um, Elizabeth, one time, we good?
Yes.
Okay.